All right, the next item coming forward is related to our return to school and the new school year. You know, we are thrilled to be two weeks underway in the new school year. And so while at our last board meeting, we took a deep dive into readiness for school opening, this will give us a brief overview. So I am thrilled to report that the new school year is well underway. We've had a really smooth start. You'll see photos and smiling faces on the screen that are just a glimpse of the excitement we experienced at our schools across the county on the first day of the new school year. The positive energy was absolutely contagious. I think it really reflects a feeling of a welcome return to some favorite school day routines. And as is customary, our talented TV services team has captured video highlights from across Enrico County Public Schools to provide us an up-close glimpse at the first week of school. So that video is coming forward for your pleasure.
You excited? Yay! You have a good day.
Mom says you need breakfast. Come on, come on.
Good morning.
You have a fantastic day, beautiful girl. Good morning.
Hey, y'all, man.
Good morning, everybody. Let's go. Come on in.
Good morning, Penguins. Happy first day of school. We're excited to see you.
Good m-m-morning.
Good m-m-morning.
Are y'all ready for the first day of school?
Yeah.
Good morning. Good, how are you guys?
Good morning, boys, you guys.
Say hey, my first day.
I'd like to say hi to you guys.
So you're in room 807. Do you even know where that is?
Yep.
Good morning.
Happy birthday.
We're so happy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
One, two.
How y'all doing? It's one.
Welcome back.
Good morning, guys.
It means another day's another opportunity, and I'm excited to get started with these youngins.
I just wanted to welcome everybody back to the 2022-2023 school year.
I hope you all are excited about your first day of school.
And we look forward to great things coming.
Let's go. Let's make it a first day, a great first day.
Okay, y'all. Hope y'all have a great school year.
Have a great first day.
What was the L? Does anyone remember? Journey. Labels. And labels go on the axis. Make an axis with your hands, right? The labels, that's what we're graphing.
So each part of her name belonged to a family member of hers. So Sophia belonged to her grandmother.
Mason, what did you learn about your friend?
Uh, she liked science, like, music.
Seven plus seven is?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, like?
Six.
Right, and eight times two.
Hey, guys, we're going to the bathroom. We're going to the bathroom.
Four, three, two, one, fantastic. Does anybody know the answer to that last question that I asked?
I'm gonna give you about 10 minutes to do that. Everybody okay? Everybody say "woo."
Excellent work. I like the way you went back and double-checked yourself. Very good work. Good thinking. That's a great idea. Kiss your brain. I love it.
Oh, it was great. We will have to see it again another time. But thank you again to our communications team for putting that wonderful video together. And thanks to many of our board members, central team members, and lots of volunteers who were on hand last week to assist in welcoming our students to a new school year. So as we segue to some operational pieces, I first want to provide a brief staffing update. You'll recall at our last meeting, just on the cusp of the first day, we reported that we had 176 openings division-wide with a 95.2% staffing rate. This week, we're happy to report we continue to make progress on our staffing levels at 172 openings today, down from 176 at our last report, and continue to leverage board substitutes and other certified staff who typically serve in different roles outside of the classroom to provide coverage. And of course, we continue to recruit teachers, instructional aides, and other staff persons. Also, a reminder for context that we did add 80 new instructional positions this year, which we believe are of critical support to our schools. But that means we're actually recruiting more instructional roles for this year than last. And we have also ensured that every classroom has been covered since day one, as we continue to find the most qualified candidates for each open position. Mr. Pritchard and Dr. Hughes will now provide a few brief updates. Again, as a reminder, today's presentation builds on the comprehensive back-to-school readiness presentation that we provided at the August 25th work session. So today's updates are abbreviated and are related primarily to highlighting operations of our schools during just these first two weeks since we've been open. Mr. Pritchard?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. In addition to staffing updates, we want to now provide a brief update to our operations as the school year is underway. We'll quickly cover facilities, transportation, school nutrition, and health and wellness. As I noted in our back-to-school readiness updates last month, over the summer, our facilities, custodians, and school-based teams did a lot to get our schools' buildings ready for the new year. Staff completed projects in all 72 buildings, including HVAC, roofing, flooring, maintenance, and deep cleaning of classrooms and common spaces. While the opening week of school was a great success on many fronts, we did have a few issues with HVAC systems at several of our schools. Some of our extended planned project work, and others were due to unforeseen glitches, breakdowns in systems. The operations team worked quickly to address each issue and in case were in fix is still in progress. Staff monitors the progress of these projects regularly and make alternate plans for sites when there are supply chain issues, vendor manpower availability issues, and/or unforeseen conditions. Supply chain and vendor support issues continue to strain many of our projects' timelines. Our school transportation team has done a phenomenal job getting all 1,658 routes up and running. During the first two weeks, ridership trends tend to level out and routes do become more finalized. And at that time, I will be able to better report on the status of the late buses. The bus app has gone well, and we have heard positive feedback from our HCPS community. The challenges that we have experienced is bandwidth issues that is on the end of Edulog and not HCPS. This has created some connectivity issues for parents. This is why we continue to use the school messenger to keep parents informed. The other area that we're improving is when a bus is out of service and the bus substitutions are made, this can affect the accuracy of the Edulog bus parent portals. As a reminder, the Edulog parent portal to the HCPS bus app is now available for parents and students. The website is listed above or is listed on our website and above on this presentation where families can find out more information. I do have some really positive news to share that I feel like it's great. We have 14 drivers and two bus assistants that should go out into their zones in the next two to three weeks. Yes. So this will help with some of our, help filling in some of our routes and eliminating double runs in areas. And so then I will now move on to school nutrition and provide that update. As pandemic funding and school nutrition programs come to an end, we have delivered post-pandemic food service plans for all of our schools. While meal applications are once again required to qualify for free and reduced-priced meals, many HCPS students will not be required to complete applications due to direct certification and the Community Eligibility Provision, CEP. School Nutritional Services continues to expand its participation in the CEP program with 40 schools currently offering free meals to all students. A list of current CEP schools can be found on our website. And at this time, I will now turn the presentation over to Dr. Hughes, the Chief Learning Officer.
Thank you. All right. So for an update on health and wellness, school nurses and staff are working to ensure all students are attending school healthy and ready to learn. In recent years, student immunization requirements have changed. Therefore, one priority with the start of the year is to ensure and help families and students access immunization clinics as needed. HCPS is working in partnership with local health departments and healthcare providers to ensure immunizations are readily available and accessible to families as quickly as possible. This slide includes a link to the Virginia School Immunization Requirements, and families looking for opportunities for immunization clinics should contact their school nurse, who can connect them with opportunities in the community. HCPS is also communicating opportunities to families via HCPS newsletters. The school nursing teams are also working to remind staff, parents, and students that they should not come to school if they are ill. With regard to COVID-19, individuals who test positive do need to isolate at home for days zero through five, and can return on day six if fever-free for 24 hours and medication-free. Students and staff no longer need to quarantine after exposures. More information about COVID guidance is on the website, and COVID test kits remain available for any student or staff who requests them. This concludes our brief update, and at this time, Dr. Pritchard and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Pritchard said that?
I was gonna say. You just graduated, Lenny. You'll take it. You'll take it. Thank you, Mr. Pritchard and Dr. Hughes. I'll start on this end this time with Ms. Atkins.
So thank both of you for the presentation. I only had one comment around air conditioning. I know that many bodies in one space generate more heat. And I have received feedback that there are few schools where the air conditioning is not working. I want to share with you that Lenny and I have had conversations. They are working diligently to resolve those issues, and we're hopeful that we'll have them resolved very, very soon. The question that I have is, I recognize that there are some maintenance issues that are not predictable. However, I do have a question with our newer schools that may be experiencing air conditioning issues. If you could address why they may be happening and/or just some insight into our protocols and trying to make sure that we do the very best we can to ensure that we're up to date on all of our equipment.
I mean, it's a little bit more challenging to answer from a new school perspective, but I will say that I think that overall, and I've reached out to my counterparts across the central region to get more information, but with some of the stuff that we did in prevention for, to create better air quality for our students during COVID with multiple flushings of outside air with our indoor parts, and then upgrading our filters, that does put a strain on our HVAC system, or it did put a strain on our HVAC system. So I think that we are starting to see some of the consequences for that. I know that in one particular school that you're referencing too, we are, that is one, because we are still under warranty with the contractor to make sure that this thing is up and running to its full efficiency. So we are still working with that part to make sure that that is done and taken care of ASAP. I wish I could give you a better answer. The new one is, that's tough.
I understand. I think that it is important that as we go through this process, because we have a few new schools, and with some of the things that we've done in trying to keep our air quality safe, maybe taking a little bit of a step back to better understand some of that, because it could be preventable possibly in the future. Not all maintenance issues are, but this might be something that we really want to pay attention to for future schools that are going to be built, and we're going to want to have some of those protocols and some of those equipment pieces that we've not had in the past that we absolutely want now and moving into the future. So that was a two-parter. One is the recommendation to consider documenting some of these things that are happening so that for future construction, we're more aware. And then the other part of it is really taking a look at some of these warranties. We won't go deeper into that, but I do think we might have an opportunity to put a little bit more pressure on our expectations, especially for our newer schools. We have a high level of expectations for equipment that we purchase, and if it is under warranty, I think that we should be receiving a high level of customer service as well. So thank you so much for what you and your team are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Augrave?
Just real quick, again, a thank you. It's all related to what Ms. Atkins was talking about, for reaching out to parents directly, because I know you did that, and I sent a couple your way, and just appreciate the direct approach that you took to parents who had concerns about, especially the HVAC issues. But those happen, and I also appreciate the fact that the folks were really quick to respond and get those. And I understand you even put portable coolers and all kinds of things to try and mitigate what was going on.
And it's something that we do plan to purchase a few more of these things, just in case down the road, as we head back into the latter part of the spring season, as we're working on some of these HVAC systems. I mean, we do have a lot of asset funding projects that we have going on now, that we will continue to have going on, that's taken a little bit longer than we had anticipated.
Well, everything is these days, it seems like.
But just to be prepared, we plan to go out, I mean, you know, catch these things on sale as the season goes out, get more of them. So, but we do plan on looking at those things, and we have been. And I think that we are currently in line to purchase at least a few more of these, like, right now, so we could have these in place moving forward.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Augrave. Ms. Consella?
Yes, I just share everyone else's enthusiasm for you addressing our HVAC issues, because I too had quite a few schools, not only the division have some issues, but I had quite a few in my district. So just thank you for your responsiveness as we've shared those with you. I just want to thank every single team member in this room and around the division, because the enthusiasm, honestly, for getting back on track and in our buildings has been amazing, whether it's students that are so excited, it's staff that's so excited, parents are excited, community is, I mean, just everyone is so excited, and I just think that's been fantastic. I just have a few questions and comments as we try to resolve some of the disruptions that we may be having to instruction. Staffing, I know Reverend Cooper may have some other staffing questions. Mine's, thank you, Ms. Bolden. I see you coming to the podium. Mine are basically gonna, my question is, what are we doing that's outside of the box? I think at this point, we can't continue to do what we've done in the past, and I know because we have these conversations a lot, that we aren't doing things the same way as we always have. But if you could just expand perhaps on, I know Mrs. Shea's gonna address job sharing, but maybe our prep program, are we considering expanding it? Are we reaching out to our retirees? Are we increased, have we increased substitute pay for our experienced teachers that may come in to substitute? Just some things like that. Could you address those?
I'll share maybe two initiatives that we're working on. I know, one, Mrs. Shea has spoken about often, and that's the job sharing piece. So we're in the process of exploring that. We don't just automatically implement that. There are some nuances. So we want to get feedback from principals and other stakeholders, because while it might sound very easy to implement, again, there are nuances. We are also working with our communications department, something that we have not done in the past. We always work with them, but around getting the word out in a more effective manner with regard to retirees and the benefits of returning to teach with us. So I'm not sure if everyone knows, but just about all of our teaching positions are critical shortage area positions, and retirees can return and teach with us, receive their full pay here, and also their full retirement benefits. So those are two examples of some different things that we're doing.
Thank you so much for addressing that, especially with our retirees, because I know I've heard from some, and they're not aware. Is there, are we reaching out perhaps to employees who have retired in the last three or four years?
Yes, so we've sent letters, but again, we're doing an advertising campaign, and our communications department, as you know, is so adept in that area. So they're gonna help us get the word out in that respect.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
You're welcome.
The next ones are for you, Mr. Pritchard. Can you let me know, how is laptop distribution gone? Have all of our students received laptops? Do you know? I know that's?
I know that it's on my agenda to have that discussion with Mr. Maddox, and we'll have that discussion, and I could get that to you in a board update. I know that schools have been working on it. We have seen an increase of students participate in summer programming and summer school. So we have to take those devices back, get those refreshed, and get those back out as well. That's why we do collect them up at the beginning, at the end of the year, and do all of that stuff. And those things are a lot easier to manage. But each school, you know, each secondary school has a TST.
Okay.
So, you know, how, what plan the school is working with to roll those things out. But I know that that is in process, and I would probably be safe to say that the majority of our students, yes, they do have a laptop.
Okay, thank you very much. My next question is, having spent some time in transportation this week, I just want to say I love hearing that we've hired 14, you said 14 new drivers and two assistants?
If all goes well, you know, I sweat it out to the last minute, but two to three weeks, they're almost there. We can put those and infuse those back into some of our zones.
So how many drivers would you say that we're short? I know each school year, from following schools for a long time, each school year, we've been traditionally short, if you will. But how many do you think we're short, really? I mean?
I'll give you two answers. We're 70 bus drivers short on paper, but to get ourselves back to that pre-pandemic state, we're about 30 drivers short.
About 30 drivers short. Thank you so much for clarification on that.
Then you can subtract 14.
Yes, yes.
So I can subtract 14.
Which is 16.
Okay. Thank you so much. And then I just had some feedback, or just, actually, first I want to make a comment, and I want to highlight something that you said in your presentation. You know, the first, the first few weeks are always busy, as we have students continuing to enroll, and then we have students who aren't necessarily riding the bus, and we have stops where there are zero students standing. So as, over the next few weeks, we should see some efficiencies?
Yes.
Correct?
Absolutely, yes, we will.
I'd also note, you know, our high schools are the last in the tier. And so some of the most complex transportation issues are at our elementary schools in those opening weeks, getting kids on and off the bus. And so that can often cause some extended delays those first weeks that begin, that unfortunately, I know, can impact the secondary schools the most. And so we're beginning to see those routines and processes at the elementary schools speed up a little bit, which will help folks get on the road and to their secondary pickups quicker.
So secondary includes middle and high school. I appreciate that clarity, because I've heard quite a bit from middle and high school parents that are concerned that some of the transportation arrival times specifically impacting instruction are repeating themselves from last year. And I just want to hear us say that's, that's not going to be the case going forward, correct?
Yes. I mean, we have taken procedures and put them in place of going out and picking up students earlier. It's just getting through these hurdles. I mean, you remember at a middle school, Dr. Cashwell talked about it in elementary school. Well, in a middle school, you're talking about a third of your students. This is a new environment to them. It's a new thing. It's a new concept. For your high schools, that's a fourth of your students that are going through this at a different level in a different place for the first time. So we're working through this at all levels, but yes, I know that we worked through this, and then, you know, we had only two areas that we felt that were going to be a conflict moving forward, but knowing that this could be worked out through this process.
So we should not see going forward, once?
Nothing like this.
We shouldn't see scheduled on-time arrivals after the instructional day has started at the secondary level?
No.
Except for events that happen on a daily basis that are beyond our control, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for highlighting that. And then, other than that, I have a question about the bus app. And you're right, you stated in the presentation, overall feedback has been favorable. But will the school administrator, how do school administrators use the app? Is there going to be a piece designed for school administration to have access?
I mean, we can look into that. We can look into that and see if that's something that would be beneficial to them. I mean, I'm sure as they're planning for their, the beginning of their day, that's something they can chart with their buses as well.
Okay.
The person that's in charge. But it's something we can look at. The main thing rolling out was making sure that it went out, and that the parents that were using it, that we were in a good place with that as well.
I would appreciate that. And then, I guess, I just want to share that I heard quite a bit from our specialty center parents about hub buses in general, and then also about some of our CTE transportation. For example, you know, getting the students from their CTE programs back to their zone building in time to catch that afternoon bus. And will those, will those routes get more efficient as well?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, and our hub system is probably our most challenging system that we have. I mean, it requires a lot of work and effort and massaging to go through that, but I feel confident that we can work through all of those problems as well.
It is, it's a lot of moving parts at the hubs. You are right.
It is a ton of pieces.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Reverend Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to just quickly start with staffing. So I know that my recruitment retention numbers are fluid. We just approved personal items, which included many new hires and some separations. We've been all hands on deck. I had the privilege, first day of school, of joining Dr. Cashwell as she taught in one of my schools in the Fairfield District, and she did a phenomenal job. I'm wondering if she's a better teacher than superintendent, but I don't know. I can't make the analysis, but she did a phenomenal job. And her being in that classroom was a great example of temporary assignments that we have made to try to accommodate issues that have occurred, creatively coming up with solutions, implementing those to ensure coverage and learning is happening in all of our classrooms since day one that school is open. But I quickly want to drill down on the current number of full-time teacher vacancies that exist across the county, but specifically in Fairfield and Verona. But Fairfield, for this particular question, where most of the vacancies are concentrated. So the last data I looked at was from the 26. And so we know, I think Dr. Cashwell alluded to, we're going to get updated data probably this week. And so I am cognizant and conscious of the fluidity of that data. But based upon that data document, I broke down the vacancies in our elementary schools. And so we talk about reading, we talk about literacy, and Dr. Hinton just informed us when we're going to see those numbers. And I've mentioned it before, and we all know that research shows that there's a direct correlation between literacy skills, dropout rates, and incarceration rates. And at the elementary levels, where we've been talking about early identification for gifted programs, preparing our students for specialist centers, IBAP course enrollment, we talk about equity, access, opportunity. But in the Verona, the Fairfield District, the vacancies, for one example, I have one school that has 10 vacancies, whereas that one school has more vacancies than three magistrate steer districts combined. And so for me personally, when you talk about 49 FTEs, and that's, that's what is noted, 49, 37, 35%, 47% Fairfield-Verona. And so the question I raise is, how do we balance the number of qualified full-time teachers versus temporary reassignment substitutes or board subs at certain schools? Because, you know, I want to make sure that the kids in my school who do not have per-hour documents, a FTE full-time teacher at such a high rate, you know, compared to other magistrate districts, that they have, one district has no vacancies, literally no vacancies for full-time teachers. The others have five, I think it was, one at five, one at four. So I just want to talk about that briefly, because I've been getting a lot of questions pertaining to that. And I think that the whole picture's not really being shared, because the numbers in themselves don't speak to what we're actually doing to ensure that those deficiencies are being dealt with. So can you just kind of briefly give me an update on that?
Sure. So I want to make sure I'm answering the correct question. So there's a piece of that that maybe speaks to recruitment and retention. And then there may be a piece, and this is a part I want you to clarify, are you asking about resources that we're providing to ensure that the students are well-served?
Sure, right. So you talk about the recruitment and retention. I'm sure that hopefully the document we get tomorrow before the week's out will update these numbers. But I just want to acknowledge publicly the comments and the questions I've been getting, based upon the last document dated August 26, where there were, you know, 10 vacancies at Glenlea, for example.
Sure. And so, for example, at Glenlea with this?
Before you answer, and I just want to say that the four schools I'm looking at specifically are Ratcliffe, LeBurnham, Glenlea, Ash, and I am very aware that all four of those are Title I schools.
Yes, yes. So I can speak to the recruitment and retention piece, and perhaps Dr. Grant can speak to the supports and resources piece. So, for example, at Glenlea, all of those positions are filled with a board sub. And so for several of those board subs, we're actively And so for several of those board subs, we're actively working to help them become fully licensed teachers. And so in addition to that, we are pursuing grants. For example, one grant that we're pursuing, it's called the Ripe Grant. I can only remember the first two words of the grant, but it's a recruitment incentive grant from the state. And it's targeted to individuals hired in August and November, between that timeframe. And identified individuals will receive an extra $5,000 for accepting a, a teaching position.
Should we receive the grant?
Should we receive the grant? So we are pursuing that. So that's one example of a recruitment strategy. Something we do have in place, though, is we have partnerships with the University of Richmond and Virginia State University, wherein our provisionally licensed teachers are able to take courses towards full licensure at a reduced or a, or for free. So that's one incentive to help defray the cost of individuals obtaining a licensure. Within the division, we've assessed the instructional assistance we have, and identified those who are poised to become licensed or can get into that pipeline, and to help them pay for their coursework, instead of reimbursing their tuition on the back end, we are upfronting that, again, to defray costs. So those are some of the recruitment slash retention initiatives, and we can provide you a more exhaustive list.
No, I appreciate that, because I, again, I think that too often when you deduce the situation to a specific, just the numbers, and not look at it from the aggregate, as far as what else is actually taking place, it kind of skews the reality of the situation. Because if you look at that data, it says we have 10 FTE full-time teachers in needed in Glen Lee. But what you just stated was, each of those classrooms have board-certified substitute teachers who are, in essence, on the precipice of-
Yes.
-becoming full-fledged teachers qualified for that class. And then you add to that the IAs that are poised to make that next step, and what we're doing to incentivize persons to take these jobs. So that, that, thank you for giving that. That's very helpful.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the question.
And so how long do we know before the grant is approved, either you or Dr. Cashwell?
I'm not sure of the timeline. I hope it's imminent.
Okay, thanks. Well, Dr. Grant, can you kind of speak, look, because for example, Glen Lee has a brand-new principal, right? So what are we doing? And use that as kind of a microcosm of what may be the paradigm for others, the other three I have, or the ones that Ms. Atkins may have, or Brooklyn, or even Tuckahoe?
In addition to our recruitment and retention strategies, and our Title I, a lot of our Title I schools, we have additional support resources, human resources and material resources. So you see vacancies because of that, all the supports we've added into schools like interventionists, math coaches, reading coaches, deans of students, of that nature.
Yeah, and I think to Dr. Grant's point, you know, one of the, and certainly, and I think Mrs. Bolden described it well, and you, you know, reiterated it, that, you know, we don't have classrooms empty of caring adults who are trained to work with our students. We want every student to have a strong start in the classroom. But we still feel the urgency around the, the recruiting and retaining staff full-time. And we know there are schools where there are more challenges, and as Dr. Grant pointed out, a number of those are in our Title I schools. And I think it's important to note that, as she pointed out, there are more staff assigned to those schools, and additional support staff. The people-to-teacher ratio is lower because of the federal program we belong to, to receive those Title I dollars, because students are at risk. So that means the principal there is recruiting for more staff than the principal at another elementary school, for example. So, but I think, again, numbers don't tell the full story, it's looking at that full picture. But then at the same time, there are often support staff, interventionist, coaches who can temporarily be reassigned to fill in in the classroom who are qualified. Still, there's a vacancy to fill, and we want all of those robust resources filled so that we're meeting the needs of the students. But as Dr. Grant said, really making sure that the schools that have the needs have the resources, both the human resources and the material resources, to make a difference.
No, thank you, Dr. Cashwell. You, thank you.
And we're providing support to the principal to make sure we set him up for success.
I, I see, Dr., he just wants to say something.
You know instruction. No, in addition, though, the Division of Learning, we made sure that the board substitutes that were hired were able to participate in the new teacher academy this year. And in addition, we've created a dashboard that certainly all of our teachers can access, but really geared towards our board, board subs who really might need, you know, some quick understanding in the teaching and learning framework, the instructional model, literacy. So we've tried to really break things down and give them access to tools that they can access readily, and so they won't have to go digging. In addition, we have a, a list of all of the board subs, and every specialist in central office, particularly in the Division of Learning, has those lists. And they're instructed, when they go out in schools, to make sure that they're touching base, what support might you need, touch base with the principals, we work so closely with Ingrid's team, what else can we do to help them? Because we want them to be successful.
Well, it's obvious, it's a team effort from Ms. Bolden, to yourself, to Dr. Grant, to Dr. Cashwell, that, that all of us, as I stated in my first statement, it is all hands on deck. Again, if you just deduce the, the context to just a number, but not understanding on the, on the micro, everything else that goes into that number, and our efforts to mitigate that number. And therefore, hopefully, our constituents, our families understand the, the magnitude of our effort to, to mitigate this. So thank you all so much, I really appreciate that. Ms. Pritchard, quick question. I know no one really drilled down on the specifics of their schools, because we have so many of us, we have so many of our schools, especially over 72 facilities. But quick question, can you just quickly, Longdale, I know we've had some challenges with HVAC, AC unit, control issues, main office, back classrooms, and the control issues for the back classrooms have all been repaired. There were some supply chain issues related to the placement of the coil that caused a four-month delay. But we were expecting to receive it this week. Do you know that we've received it, or, or how we, where we at with that, as far as that reception and work completion?
Yes, to my knowledge, I believe that, that part was done, and that system was fixed.
And we just would note, we'll provide the board a full update, a status report on any of the projects that are in progress as of the last status update. Because I know, you know, there are a lot of specific questions you may get from a number of your schools, and we want you to have the up-to-date info.
All right, so can I just get these to you, the ones that I have specific questions? Because I don't want to, now, my peers look to me crazy, right? So Glen Lee, like the new cooling tower, Fairfield, you know, the, the operating system parts, wilder, new heat pump, I'm just, I mean, I've got a list, I went through those things.
Yes.
We, we will get you specifics, yes. We'll provide the, the full board an update on schools across the board, because I know a number of you, you may continue. And I mean, absolutely, to receive constituent questions, staff questions, we want to make sure you're prepared to answer them.
Look forward to giving you those.
Yeah, but good news for Longdale, so.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Pritchard. Madam Superintendent, Madam Chair.
Can I just, Madam Chair, can I just add something?
Sure.
If you don't mind? Just, Mr. Pritchard, could you just say how many items you've actually addressed? Because yes, our schools have had issues, more than we would have thought, but I mean, the team has actually addressed many of them.
Since, since the latter part of last spring, over 200 and some calls that we've, that we've gone through, over, and, and people also need to understand, we, we have over 500 systems within our 72 schools. And some of them are, I could stand beside them and I would look small. So there you go.
Well, thank you.
At large, I mean, when we start talking 300 parts being craned up on top of a building, I mean, it's, it's, some of it's pretty extensive work that has to get done.
Thank you so much.
Yes, you're very welcome.
Madam Chair.
Thank you so, thank you so much. I have to say, I've heard mostly, with all but two issues, I've heard just such positive feedback across the board from all of our, all of my schools, all of my staff, parents, of just how smooth the opening to school this year has gone on all fronts, except for two little stumps. So let's talk a little about those. And my apologies to the team, I had a lot of thoughts come up as you were presenting. So these are not meant as stumpers, but if you need, so if you need to get back with me, feel free. The, the most, the most concern that I've heard around from my parents is class size for third through fifth grade. Lenny, you're off the hook for this one. Is class size for third to fifth grade? So I don't know if this is Dr. Cashwell, or, but can you talk a little bit why we're seeing larger class sizes for third to fifth grade? What supports we have to help alleviate the struggles there?
I can certainly address that. And we'll also, as we're finalizing enrollment, make sure we provide up-to-date numbers for the board on how class sizes are actually parsing out. So as schools are accepting enrollment and creating classes throughout the summer and planning for the school year, you know, we always examine those people-to-teacher ratios. And to the discussion we've had, and, you know, all of your colleagues have expressed concern over making sure that we have a qualified staff member in every building. In the past, we've had enough staff to kind of spread out, and in some cases where enrollment might have been lower, we might have kept a staff member in that place. In this case, we've had to collapse sections and consolidate. And so in some cases, class sizes at the secondary, elementary, third, fourth, and fifth, may be higher than typical, but are still well below the SOQ. And, you know, in, in cases where they may be a little higher, we've also worked to make sure there's an instructional assistant added to those schools to be able to assist teachers as needed. I know this board has made it a priority since the start to continue to look at class size, the impact of that on the instructional model. And that is something we have not shifted away from, and nor has our stance on that changed. But the reality of the staffing issues and making sure we're using the staff we have on hand appropriately to staff our schools, that did mean shifting some classes that in the past might have been overlooked, because we were padded with enough staff elsewhere.
Thank you. I know that's a concern at a handful of my schools, and so I appreciate you speaking to it a little bit, as well as reporting, once we get enrollment verified, reporting back to us on, on what, what it really looks like.
And that, you know, that balancing continues, you know, into the school year. And while no one wants to see classes collapsed or consolidated, we, we are watching enrollment as we always do, and, and trying to get a better idea of what students actually are showing up, and who's been a no-show, and so wanting to make sure we're maximizing staff.
Thank you. And then the other concern I've heard, Lenny, you are on the hook for this one, is, for, well, before I get into that, I want to commend your team for, your HVAC team for tirelessly and continuously, over the last couple of weeks, servicing schools. And like you said, we have over 500 different systems in our schools. But one that's of particular concern, and you and I have talked about it, and Dr. Cashwell and I have talked about it, is Freeman High School, and particularly the structure of how it's, different units kind of daisy chained together. It has some, some additional challenges, let's say. And so I've made multiple trips over there to kind of walk the building and feel the air. It was nice and chilly everywhere yesterday. So I appreciate your, your team helping with that fix. But long-term, I just want to be on the record for people to know that this is a conversation we're having about long-term, how we look at ameliorating those kind of continual concerns.
Yes. And, and I know that we've had conversations, we have had conversations before, and it's something that we will work with Mr. Wack, and see if we can identify funding to, to eventually put this thing and get this project on the board and get it done.
I, I really appreciate that, because it's a lot of days, you know, you get one part up, and the other part goes down, and it's, it's a bit of a domino effect. Thank you, thank you for that. Just two other quick, well, two quick questions. Ms. Bolden, I just, actually, I was unaware of the retirement issue, where they could have their full retirement benefits as well as get full pay. Does that apply if we can recruit from retirees from other divisions?
Yes, any VRS retiree.
That's what I like to hear. And then I also just want to thank your team for looking into the job share that you and I have been talking about since, I think, like, the third day I took office. I know that there are a lot of hurdles, and that, that is a significant lift building that infrastructure. My hope is that, just as distance learning was a catalyst for us to be able to get an HVA structure up and running, that perhaps a silver lining of some of these staffing challenges is that we'll be able to be a catalyst to look into this opportunity. So I recognize it comes with a lot of hurdles, but I really appreciate us looking into it, and hopefully for being kind of a regional leader in this opportunity to think outside the box, and provide different kind of employment opportunities to get our skilled, qualified educators in the classroom. So thank you for that. And then my last question, just, this might be something that the team needs to get back with me on. So, so thinking about nutrition, and as we have, we need families to fill out the free and reduced lunch forms this year. But spending time in my schools these past two weeks, I've been with a lot of elementary classrooms where they have snack time and students don't have snack. And so the teacher or the school is providing snacks for students who don't, and they're working on identifying if it's a student who just forgot snack, or if this is a student who qualifies for free and reduced lunch, and creating an infrastructure to provide that snack on a regular basis. So just looking at, from a division standpoint, we don't want that financial lift on our teachers to have to be going every week to buy additional snacks to provide their students. So looking at, from a structure, how do we support that, so that our, all of our students have the opportunity to have snacks in the classroom, and it's not coming out of personal funds for the teacher?
Yes, thank you for that feedback. I think that's something that we can look into, all of us together, and see what we can come up with a solution for. We certainly don't want the teachers to go into their pockets for this.
And a lot of the classrooms I was in, they shared that they have, like, community partners that had provided a bunch of snacks at the beginning of the year. So they weren't necessarily diving into their own pockets at this point in the year. But when we look at sustainability going forth throughout the year, I want to make sure that they always have what they need to support their students, but especially when it comes to food security.
Right, absolutely. Thank you for that feedback.
Thank you. And that's all for anything else, colleagues? All right. Thank you so much, team, for that update.
Thank you again to our presenters, and I hope anyone listening heard two golden nuggets from that presentation. VRS retirees can come back and work full-time, because all teaching positions are critical shortage areas, and you can receive your full-time pay as well as your full-time VRS benefit. And if you do not have a teaching license but are credentialed otherwise and want to work towards one, HCPS can help you obtain your license with little to no cost. So that's masters and oftentimes bachelor coursework that we would help pay for. So great things underway in the recruitment and retention area, and hopefully by repeating that a number of times, we'll get it out in the atmosphere. So-